Welcome to our Thursday afternoon, June 8, 2017 session of the Portland City Council. Let's see here. Carla, please call the roll.
Fish?
Here.
Saltzman?
Here.
Udaley?
Fritz?
Here.
Wheeler?
Here. All right, so council notes for today. Item 654, that was the appeal of Landon Crowell, Crowell, against the Design Commission. That's going to be rescheduled to Wednesday, June 21 at 2:00 P.M. Item 653, that's the private-for-hire issue. It has been rescheduled to June 15 at 2:00 P.M. Item 633, that's amending the contract with Impact Northwest. It's been moved to June 14 at 9:30. And Commissioner Saltzman will be recusing himself from that item, is my understanding. Item 655, the Sister Cities Annual Report is being referred back to the mayor's office. And so that leaves, let's see, 654. Let's start with item 624.
624, authorize grant agreements not to exceed $28,000 with Albertina Kerr Centers and different spokes to acquire bicycles and operate an adaptive bicycle rental pilot program.
So this was pulled from the consent agenda, so there's no reason to labor it. We also took some testimony on this item yesterday.
Yesterday, thank you, Mayor. So at the last, yesterday at the meeting, the direction from council was to try to reconcile the issues that Ms. Stillwater had when she spoke. Nicole Sharon and I met with her after the meeting and resolved the issue. I sent that email to you and your staff earlier last night, which was around making sure that people who were living on very low incomes, that they would not be precluded from using the program because of fares. And so I confirmed with her what we had spoke at our last advisory committee meeting, that we are dedicating funds so that somebody, so that the fees can be waived for anybody who cannot afford it.
And she was satisfied with that answer?
She was satisfied with that, yes.
Very good. Commissioners, any further comments or questions on this item?
Thank you for doing that.
Yeah, we do appreciate that. And we left the record open, so now I'll call for the roll.
Fish?
Hi.
Saltzman?
Well, I just wanted to say that this program that the Bureau of Transportation has been working on to provide adaptive bicycles is really great. I was very impressed with the open house that was held a couple of months ago now, probably, but just really impressed with the thought that's going into this to help people with disabilities to enjoy life as most of us do. So this is really going to be a gem. So thank you. Aye.
Fritz?
Well, as a pilot project, I support it. I do appreciate the effort. I'm concerned that, like infrequent bus service, if it's so infrequent that you can't reliably use it, then I'm concerned the pilot project might be less than optimal if there's only a couple of places where you can get and return the bikes to. So that's a concern. Secondly, as with the regular bike share, riders are required to sign a waiver of liability insurance. And I am particularly concerned with this more vulnerable population. And as we're working out the kinks in the specially-adapted bikes, that there may be some risk. But as a pilot project, someone needs to support it. Aye.
Wheeler?
I was very frankly moved by the testimony we had yesterday on this. One individual who has developed disabilities over the years said that she felt when she saw the bike share program and no adaptability capacity, she said it just reminded her of her own disabilities. And it made her quite upset. And that was moving. And so I appreciate the fact that we're trying to find a solution here that will include more people in our community to be able to use a resource like this. So I think it's a great pilot program, and I look forward to seeing the results. Aye. The ordinance is adopted. Thank you for your patience. Next item is 629.
Authorize a grant agreement with Coalition of Communities of Color for $40,000 for the Portland United Against Hate Pilot Project to complete the first phase in developing the set of recommendations for a data system for community-facing organizations to collect, track, analyze hate incidents.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Linda Castillo with OME.
Thank you again for your patience.
Sure. So I'm here in case you have any questions or comments or need an overview.
What's a forward-facing community organization? What does that mean?
What does that mean? That means that one that's on the ground, serving community, providing day-to-day services.
I think this is great. As you know, collecting data, disseminating data, speaking from the same set of facts is critically important, particularly if we're talking about issues this sensitive, particularly in the environment we're in today. So I appreciate the thought that went into this. Any other further questions?
Mayor, I'm sorry that Commissioner Udaley is not here, but I did see on Facebook a few minutes ago she was soliciting restaurant recommendations in Barcelona, so.
Rub it in, rub it in. Is there any public testimony on this item?
Oh, forgot to sign up sheets. Did anyone want to testify? Sorry.
Any further questions from my colleagues? Please call the roll.
Fish?
Aye.
Saltzman?
Aye.
Fritz?
Well, this is a relatively small amount, but it's so important. And I think it's very significant that the city council is allocating this money as quickly as possible to get it out to the community. We're all reeling from that almost daily insults and assaults on communities of color in particular, but on all of us, as we have to deal with a hate-filled environment, day in, day out. And obviously, communities of color have been feeling that for decades, if not centuries. All of us now are in this, and we need to be in it together. Mayor, I appreciate your frequent showing up at different places to demonstrate your need, your recognition of this need. And I certainly support this allocation. Thank you. Aye.
Wheeler?
Aye. The ordinance is adopted. Thank you for your patience. Next item is 632.
Authorize an intergovernmental agreement with Multnomah County for the transfer of $5,020,000 from the Multnomah County Affordable Housing Development Fund to the Portland Housing Bureau.
And I want to thank Director Krieger, who has been waiting two days to be able to present this item. Thank you.
Yes, thank you very much, Mayor. Kurt Krieger, Housing Bureau Director, with me is Carl Dinkelspiel, who manages our housing finance operation. This is a remarkable partnership with Multnomah County. Under the leadership of Commissioner Saltzman, the Bureau increased our level of effort in 2016 to expand our housing development pipeline. And in so doing, Multnomah County provided both a site and cash for us to then originate projects, which they jointly underwrote with us. And Carl Dinkelspiel managed that process. He's going to speak to the specific projects. But this is essentially the county giving the city money for projects that we've already identified.
Right. So there originally, so as Director Krieger said, there were originally $5 million that the county made available to us through what they called the Multnomah County Affordable Housing Development Fund. We worked collaboratively with them to select projects. They selected three. One is, we call Block 45, on a piece of property that PHB still owns, at the corner of Grand Avenue and Holiday. The developer there will be Home Ford. And then there are two Central City Concern projects, one at Stark Street and one on 6905 North Interstate. That was about $3.3 million between those projects. There was an additional $1.7 million that was left. And the county decided that they would like us to administer that $1.72, something called the East Side Health Clinic, which is another Central City Concern project, which unfortunately, I don't know too much about. But there is some transitional housing there as well. The other three projects are, you know, permanent supportive housing, permanent housing, sorry, permanent affordable housing in the mode of our traditional projects.
Thank you. So the individual who pulled this is not here today. But is there any public testimony on this item? Seeing none, colleagues, any further questions on this item? Please call the roll.
Fish?
Aye.
Saltzman?
Appreciate Multnomah County working very cooperatively with the city of Portland to provide affordable housing. This is a great example of cooperation. Aye.
Fritz?
Desperately needed. We needed it five years ago. I'm glad it's getting done now. And in particular, permanent supportive housing for people experiencing mental health challenges is definitely a huge need. And I appreciate both the city and the county recognizing that. Aye.
Wheeler?
It's a good start. And Dan, I want to thank you for your leadership on this. You and Kurt saw the importance of the vision here. And I know that your team has worked very, very hard to bring this to fruition. And the partnership is a strong one. It's a great one. And again, I'll just mimic what Commissioner Fritz just said about the importance of the county and the city working collaboratively on these kinds of issues. Aye. The ordinance is adopted. 633 has been pulled and will be, excuse me, it's been rescheduled, not pulled. It's been rescheduled to June 14 at the 9:30 a.m. session. Please call the next item, which I believe is 639.
Amend an agreement with the Portland Business Alliance to provide policing services for the Clean and Safe Program.
Very good. Captain Graham is with us today.
I brought an expert with me, so don't worry.
I didn't say anything. You said it, right? Good afternoon. If you could state your names for the records, please.
Good afternoon. I'm Captain Larry Graham, Central Precinct Captain.
Good afternoon. I'm Lynn A. Berg, Executive Director of Downtown Clean and Safe.
I think we're just looking to renew the contract, the successful contract that we've had for the last several years with Clean and Safe, providing the officers and services to the downtown business community and the neighbors. The only thing I really want to address is, I think I remember Dan Handelman yesterday made a comment about, "It seems unfair that we're providing these resources downtown when there's other parts in the city that have issues." I'd like to point out that a lot of the reasons that these people are down here, our officers especially, is because we do provide the resources for the homeless downtown. That's where the majority of the resources are, whether it be the homeless shelters, whether it's the mental health facilities. And so that's why it's critical to have these officers assigned here so they can deal with that. Officers that were assigned to this detail, like during the winter snowpocalypse, spend a lot of their time checking on people, making sure they're fine, getting them to the shelters that they need to. They've developed relationships. And as the city focuses on livability issues and making downtown more friendly, these are going to be, it's going to be a key component in making sure that happens. I think you heard me say it before, Mayor, compassionate accountability.
Thank you, sir.
And I'd just like to add that we have had a partnership with the city since 1988 to supplement cleaning and security in the downtown core, to ensure that our downtown is vibrant and welcoming to all people. Our signature cleaning program last year, which involves a partnership with Central City Concern, where formerly homeless individuals are employed, cleaned up 627 tons of garbage out of downtown, picked up 16,589 needles, and removed over 36,000 graffiti tags. The security program employs a strategy of both private security and Portland police officers. For over a decade, Clean and Safe has funded four officers as a public service, which also frees up general fund revenue for other priorities. The police officers are assigned to the geographic area of the district, that their work is solely directed by Central Precinct and supervised by Central Precinct. And of course, if there is an emergency outside the downtown core, they respond. The officer's work consists of problem-solving, relationship-building, and addressing the livability issues you've heard about. The officers in security have deep relationships with both social service agencies, businesses, and residents, including those who are unsheltered. For example, the police officers who are currently assigned to the district are the only law enforcement officers who can refer individuals to the LEED program, which is Law Enforcement-Assisted Diversion. It's a harm reduction program that is being piloted by Multnomah County, which seeks to refer people to services instead of to the criminal justice system. And these are people who are arrested for drug charges. This is but one example of the non-traditional approaches involving our partnership. Our downtown is the economic engine that drives the health of our city. Over a decade ago, leaders, civic leaders and business leaders understood the importance of a safe and vibrant downtown and committed to strategies that have been proven effective, including using additional officers within the district. I encourage you to extend the five-year contract.
Thank you, Commissioner Fritz.
Thank you, Mayor. Dan Handelman said that there are now four officers, where previously there were three. Is that correct?
There have been four since I've been involved in the program, which was 2012. I think roughly before I came in 2011, the number increased to four. So we pay for four, yes.
Got it. And are they for specific people or?
Yes, they are selected for a lot of the traits that I've talked about that are important for relationship-building, problem-solving. So yes, they're specifically selected, and they ride bicycles.
And what hours do they work?
They typically work the morning shift, and then there is overlap with some afternoon shift as well.
And but for the four specific officers, there's?
Yeah, they work anywhere. Their shifts are split. Some of them work like from 7 until 4, and some work later on in the afternoons.
And so how many would be on duty at any particular time?
Four.
No, it's not.
Oh, there's actually six. Four are funded, there are four funded from this contract, and then the Bureau provides an additional two. So there's six at any one time. So there's usually typically about four working.
And does Clean and Safe direct the other two or have any interaction with the other two?
No.
No, we direct it. Central Precinct, I have a Sergeant Jeff Nia is in charge of that. And he directs, you know, we work together, but we're the ones that direct activity and stuff.
Okay. And about this law enforcement diversion, which I saw at the county, how is that different from the service coordination team?
It's, it is different in that the philosophy of that program is that people may still use while they're trying to change their lives. So they aren't necessarily put into housing. They are given services where they're at. So if they need help with something as simple as some clothing, these case, they're referred to these case managers by the officers. And the case manager will do an assessment with them and decide, "What is it that you need today?" And then build a relationship with this person, because addiction is tricky, and people sometimes aren't ready to take a step into supportive housing or to do that work. So it's a way to engage people and try to do harm reduction in the community at the same time.
Okay, thank you. And since some of the service coordination team money is now one-time, as you're evaluating for next year's budget, I do think we should look at, are we duplicating? How could we perhaps work with the county rather than having that officers make that call as to who gets into which program? I don't know how that works. I always appreciate when I get the annual report from Clean and Safe. Have heard about the competition to see who can pick up as many cigarette butts. You didn't have that number, but it's usually a phenomenal amount in a day, never mind in a year. Would it be possible to get an annual report about the officers assigned to this detail? Because one of the concerns that's been raised is, are they ticketing people at a disparate rate for low-level offenses? And so I'd like to know what's the, what's the outcome of having these four positions paid for and extra services?
Sure. I'm sure that'd be something we'd be able to do. I think it's easy for, not easy, but I mean, it's something that we could have our support professionals put something together to show what compared to the others. These are more proactive officers, because they need to be out there. There's more direct issues. So I would, you're going to see a higher amount of tickets. But you're also going to see them a lot more referrals to like the LEED program or service coordination team. You know, good policing has a little bit of both, a little bit of enforcement, a little bit, you know, a little bit of help.
Right. I appreciate that. I think if people knew more about what they were doing, there'd be even more support for the program. So I'm wondering, Mayor, if you'd be willing to add a directive C, that there'll be an annual report on this program. So I'd move that as amendment?
So moved. Is there a second?
And I'm not aware, was this, I don't know if this was slated to be an emergency amendment or not.
That's not been raised yet. And if you want that, we'll entertain that.
I think I need to. I think that's what I was.
Hang on, let me take care of this first. So Commissioner Fritz has moved, Commissioner Saltzman second the request for an annual report.
I fully support the idea of an annual report. I am reluctant to just give a blank check to an annual report without understanding exactly what we're asking them to compile, what format, what kind of frequency and the like. I mean, I think we should, if the concept is, we'd like to have an annual report, I think there should be some follow-up discussion about how to make that a useful exercise.
Well, it seems fairly straightforward, I would think. I just.
It's not straightforward to this commissioner, maybe to this commissioner, but so I'm prepared to support it as a concept. But I would ask, Mayor, that your office take the lead in kind of fleshing out what the report would be and for what purpose.
Okay, good. I'm seeing head nods all around. Let's take the vote on the amendment, please. Call the roll.
Fish?
Aye.
Saltzman?
Aye.
Fritz?
Thank you, Mayor. Aye.
Wheeler?
Aye. The amendment is adopted. Captain Graham, you had wanted to make the case for an emergency.
Yeah, I apologize. Wanted to make it an emergency. It actually expires at the end of this month. And so my understanding is if you approve it like normal, then it's 30 days before it goes into effect. And then it causes some problems with fiscal.
Yes, I'd move to add an emergency clause on it.
Thank you.
I'll second. And my understanding, sir, is that there's a public safety reason that this needs to be adopted on an emergency basis.
Commissioner Fritz moves. Commissioner Fish seconds.
Okay.
Please call the roll.
Fish?
Aye.
Saltzman?
Aye.
Fritz?
Aye.
Wheeler?
Aye. Is there, I'm sorry, was there more to your presentation?
No, that was it.
Is there any public testimony on this item?
Yes, we have one person, Mary Syke.
Come on up, Mary.
And we'll follow up with the report. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Hi, my name's Mary Syke. I just wanted to testify in support of this ordinance. So often, anything that has anything to do with police funding is vehemently opposed by members of the audience. And I, I just, I want to say that the area that I live in, we've had tremendous problems over the last couple of years with all sorts of criminal activity and, you know, illegal camping, all sorts of problems. And last summer, I coordinated a meeting with, through the Crime Prevention Division, with officers from the East Precinct. And we learned an awful lot about the limited resources that our police bureau has to address these problems. And what we did is we expanded our neighborhood foot patrol. And we received, we've been receiving over the course of the last two years, a lot of assistance from the Crime Prevention Bureau, from the East Precinct, with helping us determine how we can, on our own, address some of these issues. Needles in one area of our neighborhood, we literally have been counting how many needles we dispose of. And we've been getting help. We're doing a lot of PDx reporter. And one of the things that we did is the North Park blocks had a really serious problem. And through the PDNA Livability and Safety Committee, we reached out to the businesses in the area and the HOAs of the various residential areas. And they came together and funded a private security patrol that patrols from 10:00 P.M. until 7:00 a.m. in that area. And it's been amazing. And I'm really supportive of Amanda Fritz's suggestion about the reporting. This private security company gives us monthly reports, and it just paints such a picture. You can really measure the success. You can measure where the, you know, sort of the water in the balloon is. You know, you push here and you fix one problem, then a new one bubbles up over here. And I just, I just can't say enough, we would love if Clean and Safe could extend itself to our neighborhood. But what we've done is we've tried to mimic what they're doing. And I think this is a model. And I can't say enough about it. And I can't say enough about providing the funding to continue the program. So, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Please call the roll.
Fish?
Aye.
Saltzman?
Aye.
Fritz?
This is a five-year contract, so I would have been uncomfortable with it without the agreement on an annual report. Obviously, I support the program. I just want more people to know about the good things that they do. I think that's part of our challenges with accountability and transparency, is people just don't know. I got beats, never mind. Aye.
Wheeler?
So I have actually done a considerable amount of research on this program. And I've gone out with a number of times with the officers involved in this program. And I think this is one example where the Police Bureau and the Portland Business Alliance doesn't do enough to sell what I think is an amazing program for this community. It's not about enforcement. And as I walked around, you know, in January, when people were literally freezing to death on our streets, they were exercising compassion, they were exercising civility, they were asking people what they could do. civility, they were asking people what they could do for them, what sort of help they needed. And to be blunt, I was really impressed. I felt like in many regards, the individuals assigned to this detail know the individuals who they are working with better than anyone else in this community. And that was pretty obvious. And they could not have faked it for my benefit because it was pretty obvious that the people that they were working with had a lot of respect and frankly, a lot of enthusiasm for the people who were assigned to the Clean and Safe program. So I think it's great and I'm glad they came in and I'm glad we have the opportunity to expend this contract. I agree. I like the idea of doing an annual report. It'll give a little more, I don't want to use the word publicity, but it'll help the public better understand what it is that, that they are actually doing and give people an opportunity to see it and ask questions in the light of day about the program. So I support it. Aye. The ordinance is adopted as amended. Could I ask you a question? Carly, you had mentioned 643. Didn't we take the vote on 643 yesterday or did we not have time to do that?
We did not. I don't even think we read the title. 643, approve rental rehabilitation conditional grant product guidelines.
This is a second reading. Please call the roll.
Fish?
So I want to thank Andrea Mathiason, who's here and who has spent a good time of her work life with us over the last two days, probably last two weeks. And I did get a chance to see the, the Q and A that you prepared. I want to be very clear. I have some reservations about this program largely because I want the pilot to be a success. And as Andrea reminded me, it is a pilot. And she also reminded me that there are other jurisdictions that have successfully modeled this approach. We have a scarcity of resources. And so I want to make sure that if we're investing $10,000, $15,000, $25,000 in a unit, we're making sure there's a clear public benefit. And I'm also loathe to put any more administrative burdens on the Portland Housing Bureau. It seems in the last four or five years, we've just layered administrative burdens. And my recollection is your staff has not grown accordingly. So those are my reservations, but I appreciate Andrea is one of the stars, in my opinion, of the Bureau. And if she thinks she can make this pilot work, I'm, I'm betting on her. So I'm going to vote aye.
Saltzman?
Well, I'm pleased to see this important program moving forward. It's an essential part of our strategy to address rental affordability and fulfill an important promise made to East Portland. I'd also like to be sure that the council does receive regular updates in the quarterly reports the Housing Bureau provides to the city council. And good work to the Housing Bureau for this program. Aye.
Fritz?
Thank you for the frequently asked questions and for all your good work. Aye.
Wheeler?
Aye. The ordinance is adopted. Christine, I have a question for you. 641, I'm going to give you a couple of options because you've been patient. This is the second day you've been here and we are pretty much out of time. Can you give us a, we've all read the dossier. Can you give us a quick presentation so we can clear the decks so you don't have to come back on this?
641, accept bid of Iron Horse Excavation LLC doing business as Oxbow Construction for the Southeast Interceptor Rehabilitation Project for $4,483,710.
Good afternoon.
Christine Moody, Procurement Services. Mayor, would you like me to present or do you want to just ask questions?
Well, I, I'd like you to, if you want to give the full presentation, we're going to have to hold it over again. If you can give us the abridged presentation, we can take care of it now and send you on your way.
Okay. I will just talk about the MWSB on this. So the city put forward an aspirational goal for DMWSB. Oxbow Construction identified four divisions of work for DMWSB participation and subcontracting participation is at 8.8% with work being performed in video, concrete coring, traffic control, and pipe cleaning. Oxbow Construction is a certified women-owned disadvantaged business, so the combined prime and subcontracting participation on this project is at 58.5%. I'll turn this back over to council if you have questions.
Very good. Council?
Did the concrete pouring get a bid that was accepted?
Did the concrete pouring, concrete coring, yes. Oh, great.
Very good. Any public testimony on this item? Please call the roll.
Motion to accept.
I move to accept the report.
Second?
I apologize. Commissioner Fish moves. Commissioner Fritz seconds the request to accept the report. Please call the roll.
Fish?
Christine, thank you for your very economical report. Returning 14 of the 15 minutes back to the mayor. Aye.
Saltzman?
Very impressive, minority women, emerging small business. Good work. Aye.
Fritz?
Well, thank you, Christine Moody, for all of your good work, as usual. Aye.
Wheeler?
I'm sorry that you had to wait as long as you did to give that report, but I want to go back to the 58.5%. I'd like to see a lot more of those. Well done. Thank you. Aye. The report is accepted. Let's do, can we do the same thing on 642?
642, approve findings and authorize an exemption to the competitive bidding process for the design and construction of the stadium expansion project pursuant to ORS 279C.335 and City Code Sections 5.34.810 through .830.
Colleagues, I'll just give a brief introduction on this. You have had a lengthy presentation on the stadium expansion project. This is a necessary ordinance in order for the design phase and the planning phase and the construction phase to be completed. This is an example of the private sector stepping forward to do all of the work on the facility. And this is necessary in order to continue that process. Christine?
So, thank you, Mayor Christine Moody. What you have before you is the required exemption and the findings that were published in the Daily Journal of Commerce. This is taking place of the public hearing as required by state statute to exempt this portion of the project from the public bidding requirements as Peregrine is going to be the owner-operator on this and they will be bidding out all the construction work for this renovation.
Any further questions, colleagues? Any public testimony?
No one signed up.
Call the roll.
Fish?
Aye.
Saltzman?
Aye.
Fritz?
I do think it's important to note that the impact statement says that although they are not specific, they are not specific to the action contemplated in this ordinance, the city will incur some costs related to the construction of the project. These costs include retaining an owner's representative team to provide design and construction oversight of the project and legal fees associated with the preparation of a term sheet and making necessary amendments to the existing legal agreements that cover Peregrine's operation of the stadium. So let's be clear, as the mayor said, this is a public-private partnership and the city does have some skin in the game or dedication of public money. And I appreciate this project. Aye.
Wheeler?
I, I will accept that amendment to, to my previous statement. I appreciate that clarification. Aye. The ordinance is adopted. So now we are moving, thank you very much again. Oh, no, that's good. We are now on the afternoon session. We'll have the Budget Office come up and direct us through this process. What we're going to do is read all items. Well, first of all, let me just say we have, just a reminder for people who might not have heard, 655 has been pulled back to my office. So we're going to read all the items, Carla, sorry, 646 through 652. We're going to read them together. Andrew, you're going to lose your quorum in 55 minutes.
646, conduct a proposed use hearing on state shared revenue. 647, certify that certain services are provided by the city to establish eligibility of state shared revenues. 648, approve accepting funds from the state of Oregon under the revenue sharing program for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2017 and ending June 30, 2018. 649, update fund statements of purposes for various city funds. 650, approve creating the Portland Police Association Health Insurance Fund and closing the Headwaters Apartment Complex Fund, the Education URA Debt Service Fund, and the Willamette Industrial URA Debt Service Fund. 651, adopt the annual budget of the city and establish appropriations for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2017 and ending June 30, 2018. And 652, approve levying taxes for the city for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2017 and ending June 30, 2018.
And Andrew, is this where I read the statement for the record?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Andrew Scott, City Budget Director. There are a number of procedural steps we need to take to finalize this year's budget process, but I'm pretty confident we can get through those relatively quickly. First of those is to hold a proposed use hearing on state shared revenue.
Very good. This hearing is being held by the City Council of Portland, Oregon in compliance with the provisions of the State Revenue Sharing Regulations, ORS 221.770. It's to allow citizens to comment on the proposed use of these funds in conjunction with the annual budget process. As proposed for council adoption, the fiscal year 2017-18 budget anticipates receipts totaling $17,485,117 from state revenue sharing under ORS 221.770. As has been the case in prior years, it's proposed that this revenue be allocated in equal parts to support fire prevention and police patrol services. Is there anyone here today who wishes to be heard on this subject? Seeing none, I'm now closing the hearing to discuss proposed uses of state revenue sharing.
Excellent. Thank you. Now we move on to, there's a resolution, there are three steps with this state revenue sharing. We just did step one. Step two is a resolution to certify that we meet eligibility under state requirements. So this is a resolution that was read, certifying that certain services are provided by the city to establish eligibility for state shared revenues. We just need a vote on this.
So that is 647?
Correct.
And just so I understand the process here, since this is not an ordinance, this is an actual hearing, is there public testimony on these items?
Yes, so there, each one of these items does have an opportunity for testimony.
Okay, so there's a separate vote and they're treated as an emergency, so we're effectively voting on them today?
Yes, correct.
Okay, very good. Is there any further conversation with regard to item 647? Is there any public testimony on item 647, establishing eligibility for state shared revenues? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Aye.
Saltzman?
Aye.
Fritz?
Aye.
Wheeler?
Aye. The resolution is adopted.
Great, thank you. That was step two for state shared revenue. And step three is to adopt an ordinance that approves accepting funds from the state of Oregon under the state shared revenue program.
Very good. Colleagues, we're on item 648. Is there any further discussion before I ask for public testimony?
Andrew, has the, has the city ever refused to accept funds from the state of Oregon?
We, to my knowledge, we have not. Commissioner?
Okay, good. We're on a roll.
Is there any public testimony on item 648 or anybody you'd like to testify on item 648? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Fish?
Aye.
Saltzman?
Aye.
Fritz?
Aye.
Wheeler?
Aye. The ordinance is adopted.
Great, thank you. That's a lot of work for the $17.5 million. And now we move on to the remaining $4.8 billion in the city budget. The next step in today's process is an ordinance that updates fund statements of purpose for various city funds. So just a very quick background here is that, oh, did I miss one, Claudio? Are we doing the, yeah, no, that's right. Yeah, so there was a, an audit a couple of years ago around all of our funds noting that, you know, that, that in most cases, we had fund statements of purpose, but there were a few missing. So there was an ordinance passed by council in June of 2015 that approved fund statement ordinances for each city fund in existence and it directed us to come back on an annual basis for any necessary revisions to those fund purposes, statements of purpose. And today there are three that we are, three that we're dealing with. And then there is an amendment to this section as well. So let me grab this. The, the updated fund statements of purpose, the recreational marijuana tax fund, it's a new fund being created, so we're establishing a statement of purpose for that fund. PPA health insurance fund is also a new fund and establishing a fund statement of purpose for that. And then finally, the public election fund, again, another new fund for the city and establishing that. And so there, we do need action to approve this ordinance. However, there is an amendment here with regards to the marijuana fund and what was included in your packet, the recreational marijuana tax fund was an old version. And so the amendment that you have replaces it with the updated version with some additional detail.
I'll entertain the motion. I'll second it. Commissioner Fish moves. I'm seconding. Any further discussion? Very good. Any public testimony on the amendment? Please call the roll.
Fish?
Aye.
Saltzman?
Aye.
Fritz?
Aye.
Wheeler?
Aye. The amendment is accepted to the main motion. Are there any other questions? Any public testimony to the main motion? Please call the roll.
Fish?
Aye.
Saltzman?
Aye.
Fritz?
Aye.
Wheeler?
Aye. The ordinance is adopted.
Great, thank you. The next item is an ordinance that approves the opening and closing of various funds in the city. And what council's being asked to do today is to create the Portland Police Association Health Insurance Fund, the one you just adopted the statement of purpose for. And then also closing three funds, closing the Headwaters Apartment Complex Fund. Those funds are moving to the new housing property fund with other PHB-owned property expenses and revenues. Closing the Willamette Industrial Urban Renewal Area Debt Service Fund. Tax collection ceased in 2015 and all remaining revenues were returned to counties in 2015, 16, and no balance remains. And then finally, closing the Education Urban Renewal Area Debt Service Fund. Same situation there with tax collection ceasing in 2015 and no balance remaining.
So Andrew, I have one question on this. I'm actually old enough to remember when the council adopted and approved the Education Urban Renewal District and then we pulled the plug on it and we ended up reconstituting another district. So what, what did we, what debt did we incur in that district? Was that the, the street car fix or something?
Not entirely certain, but my guess is that any expenses would have been, would have been de jure financed. I don't believe there was any.
What does that mean, de jure financed?
That's essentially all urban renewal expenditures at PDC are, have to be financed with, they have to be financed rather than receiving a tax directly.
So there was some activity even though we didn't actually, it, it, it never formally went forward. So this is just the formal action of acknowledging we opened a fund and now we're closing it.
Correct, yeah. These are all housekeeping, these closures in particular are housekeeping.
Thank you.
Very good. Any public testimony on item 650? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Fish?
Aye.
Saltzman?
Aye.
Fritz?
Aye.
Wheeler?
Aye. The ordinance is adopted.
Great, thank you. So the next item, this is where we actually are going to adopt the annual budget of the city of Portland, which is what we're here to do. So I'll take just a minute just to sort of walk through. And then I believe there are also some amendments that, to bring forward on this as well. But just, there are a number, so just, you know, to recall the process, you know, the mayor released his proposed budget, council approved the budget just about three weeks ago. Last night, the Tax Supervising and Conservation Commission signed off and certified the city of Portland's budget. And now we're moving towards final adoption, which is the last step in terms of setting our budget for the next fiscal year. So between the approved budget, the budget the council approved as the budget committee three weeks ago and today, there are a few changes and I just wanted to walk through those. And those are reflected in what was filed in terms of what's, what's being discussed today on the table. So there is an increase of $1.4 million in funding for the Joint Office of Homeless Services in this adopted budget. That's funded by three different offsets. $750,000 of that is coming from carryover from the 2016-17 Joint Office of Homeless Services budget. So this is, they are projecting underspending, our share of underspending would be about $750,000. And we've talked to the county and worked with them to just agree to carry that funding over to help fund some services next year instead of having that fall to general fund balance. $400,000 is being reduced from the Bureau of Emergency Communications and the Uninterruptible Power Supply Project. I think it's worth noting here, that's an important project that is still moving forward and this action doesn't affect that timeline at all. It's not clear whether that $400,000 will be needed in the next few months, which is why we're grabbing that back right now for the joint office. To the extent that is needed, the project will still be able to move forward on a rapid timeline by using facilities reserves funds. And then Boick is going to come back in the fall and ask for this funding again in the fall supplemental budget. And I think the expectation, and I think this is an important point for council, is that we will be looking to, to fund that $400,000 out of a, out of the capital set aside money in the fall bump. So this is more, we're not sure they're going to need the money in the next few months. And so it's a temporary, temporary takeback of those funds with the expectation they'll get them back. And then the very last item, the offset is a...
Yet, that what you gave us didn't add up to 1.4. So there was the carryover, 730, the Boick item, and what's the rest of it?
So, and then the very last item is a 10% one-time reduction for all new personal services funding in the 17-18 budget. That's $267,000.
That's going to housing, I mean, to the joint office?
Yes, that's right. That $267,000... Yes, that's right. That $267,000 is the remainder to get to that 1.4 million.
Sorry.
That's based on all the new positions that have been authorized as part of this adopted budget. The expectation is that bureaus will be very hard pressed to fill those on July 1. And so we feel like it's safe to take back 10% of that funding, roughly five weeks of the year, as they go through their own recruitment process and filling process, and using that money on a one-time basis for the Joint Office. So those three pieces make up that 1.4 million.
So my understanding is the Joint Office, we have the baseline of 25 million, and we're almost up to 35 million for what we're allocating in this budget. Is that correct?
I believe that the total is, would be 27.4 million.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, the additional 1.4 million on top of the 25 million that was in the approved budget. Outside of the Joint Office, just a few relatively small changes. There is a shift of $52,440 in the Bureau of Emergency Communications from the general fund to our partner jurisdictions, which appropriately reflects the 80-20 split of the additional labor costs that are approved in this budget. There is a reduction of $50,000 from general fund contingency to fund the consultant study required by the budget note around the Office of Community Technology. There's a reduction of $51,697 from contingency to fund additional operations and maintenance in Parks Bureau. This offsets a reduction that was included earlier in the budget process and trues up their O&amp;M funding. And finally, there are several changes to budget notes regarding participatory budgeting, and then a new budget note as well around looking to a participatory budgeting pilot in the 2017-18 budget. Those budget notes are included in your packet, and you can show sort of the, thank you, the other, the changes are marked in underline and strikeout. So the new budget note around participatory budgeting pilot says, "Council directs the city budget office to create a proposal for developing and implementing a participatory budgeting pilot process. CBO shall present their recommendations to council during the fall, FY 2017-18 Fall Supplemental Budget Process for consideration as part of the 18-19 budget development." So just something to come back. And then the other change on the, specifically around the recreational marijuana tax revenue, that is now going to be a community-driven inclusive budgeting process, and so the FY 2017-18 budget includes $500,000 in recreational marijuana tax revenue to be allocated via a community-driven inclusive process to be managed by the city budget office with guidance from Commissioners Udaly and Fritz. The project managers shall report to council by November 30 of 2017 on their progress. Funding allocated through this process will go towards the following: support for neighborhood small businesses, especially women-owned and minority-owned businesses, including but not limited to business incubator programs, management training, and job training opportunities, and providing economic opportunity and education to communities disproportionately impacted by cannabis Those are the changes that were filed in the adopted budget, and I believe there may be some amendments council would like to consider as well.
I have some questions, not amendments.
Commissioner Fish?
No, I have some questions, but not amendment. Let's take the amendment first.
So I think you have, in front of you, there are some amendments, and if you'd like, I can go ahead. We can, I think we can put them all on the table.
Okay, why don't I go ahead and move some of these. Number one, a motion to substitute page one of attachment F. Sorry?
That one was already done as part of the, the fund statement, so.
Good point. So here we are. Motion to amend attachment D, specifically the budget note with regard to Vision Zero.
Second.
Great. Do I, I don't need to read the whole thing into the record, or should I? Legal counsel?
I don't believe you need to.
Perfect, glad to hear it.
As long as the clerk has been provided.
So I have moved what is listed as item number two, Vision Zero. Commissioner Fritz has seconded. Let's get, why don't we get these all on the table? Move the, a motion to move the youth pass, youth bus pass funding from the Portland Bureau of Transportation to special appropriations.
Second.
I have moved, I'll give Commissioner Saltzman the second on that one. And then Commissioner Fritz has.
Oh, thank you. This one's a bit more complicated. Let me read my notes.
And the first two, by the way, we'll call those Wheeler one and Wheeler two, respectively.
So this is regarding the urban forestry budget redirection. There's an issue with maintenance of facilities in various, in multiple parts of the Parks Bureau, and the most urgent need is to the Delta Park Maintenance Facility, which is another, which is the Bond Project as well, but it needs additional general fund resources. So I move to reallocate funding from the Mount Scott Community Center roof to the Delta Park Maintenance Facility. Can I get a second, then, I'll explain it. Thank you. And so this would allocate $2 million, which is already within the Parks Capital Construction and Maintenance Fund, but it would shift it from the Mount Scott Community Center roof to the Delta Park Maintenance Facility project. The Mount Scott Community Center roof was previously funded in the, in this current year's budget, 16-17. And so we'd be amending attachments B, C, and E as necessary. And we will be coming back to council again in the fall to ask again, or in the, in the next budget process, to add the money for the roof at Mount Scott Community Center. Of all the things that we got done in the last budget, this was one that hadn't moved very far along, and so we were able, with your approval, to shift it to the more urgent need.
But that's been moved and seconded?
Moved and seconded. We'll call it Fritz number one. Any further discussion on the amendments? Please call the roll.
Mayor, there's one more on the back.
That's for the next item.
I had another one that you were going to introduce, Mayor.
Oh, you have another? Great, let's hear it.
Well, it's a technical amendment, requested by Debt Service in the Office of Management and Financing that was just found out. But if I was the only one that's got the information, I'll just read it.
So that one is actually going to be on the tax levy ordinance, which will be the next, the next item.
Right, thank you very much.
Very good. Please call the roll on Wheeler one.
Fish?
Aye.
Saltzman?
Aye.
Fritz?
Aye.
Wheeler?
Aye. The amendment's adopted. Please call the roll on Wheeler two.
Fish?
Aye.
Saltzman?
Aye.
Fritz?
Aye.
Wheeler?
Aye. The amendment is adopted. Please call the roll on Fritz one.
Fish?
Aye.
Saltzman?
Aye.
Fritz?
Aye.
Wheeler?
Aye. The amendment is adopted.
So I have a few questions, Mayor.
Please, Commissioner.
Andrew, would you remind us, when we adopt this budget, how much money will be left in contingency?
This budget will include $2.2 million of, $2,210,000 of general fund contingency.
Thank you. And because the mayor landed by parachute in the middle of this budget season, would you remind us again, when do you intend to issue with the mayor budget guidance in the fall, approximately?
Yeah, budget guidance is generally issued in October for the following fiscal year.
Okay. Legislative history, the mayor and I have had a conversation about a budget note, which is the one that's designed to look at the film office and figure out where it should land and some kind of sustainable funding. He's asked me to take the council lead on that, so I will work with the independent budget office, and we'll have a recommendation, hopefully, in the fall or timed with the budget process so that it can be considered. And then also, because Commissioner Udaly is not here, Mayor and colleagues, she and I have been having a conversation, I think others of you have had conversations with some community partners around the funding of a study to determine feasibility for a one-stop drop-off center for our reuse nonprofit partners. It's an idea that each of us, that my understanding is all of us have had a preliminary briefing. I personally think there's a lot of merit in taking a look at it from a feasibility point of view. It is not our intention, though, to bring an amendment today to seek the $60,000 for the funding. It is instead to flesh out the proposal and bring it back to council either as a freestanding item, assuming there's council support, or in the fall bump. So I just wanted to flag that.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Commissioner. Is there any further discussion on the main motion? Just Commissioner Saltzman?
One question. You said at the beginning of your remarks, it's a $6.8 billion budget?
No, it's a $4.8 billion budget.
$4.8. And our general fund is around 600?
Yes, the general fund, the total general fund is just under $630 million. General fund discretionary is 521.6 million.
Okay, thanks.
I think what Dan's trying to say is he'd like more money for transportation. If you have that much money, why isn't more going to transportation? I'll second your amendment.
Those are big numbers, both of them.
Very good. Is there any further public testimony?
No one signed up.
Please call the roll.
Fish?
So one of the mayor's unique powers, or maybe put differently, one of the mayor's unique burdens, is that he or she proposes the first cut of the annual city budget, and then is charged with leading council negotiations to get to a final budget. It is a challenging exercise each year, and especially for a first-term mayor in his first 150 days. Ted, you have led a collaborative, inclusive, and productive budget process. This budget reflects our shared values, our community's values, and it is one that I think we can all be proud of. I want to thank the mayor and his staff, Andrew Scott and his team at the city budget office, my colleagues, the public that took the time throughout this process to testify and help us get it right, and of course, my own team headed by my chief of staff, Sonya Schmansky. Aye.
Saltzman?
Well, I'd also like to thank the mayor, my colleagues, our citizen budget advisors, and all the offices, all the employees of the budget office, and all of our staff offices and all the bureaus who collaborate, my delight, to put together a $4.8 billion budget. That's an impressive number. And I'm very pleased to have, you know, played some role in helping to shape this budget. Aye.
Fritz?
So these votes with little community input at this time are so significant, they represent over eight months of work, and I very much appreciate the city budget office's guidance throughout the process, all of the bureau staff, particularly the ones that I've been associated with, Michael Bate and the Parks staff, Lisa St. Helen and the emergency services staff, Amalia Alaconto Morris and Amy Archer of the only, of the Office of No-Bid Involvement, which I was in charge of for much of the budget process. And what we're seeing here are things that I find very, very satisfying, and I appreciate the mayor for your, the way that you've conducted this whole process. Perhaps most important is that Portland United Against Hate, that we've allocated $118,235 to that community organization, that coalition of community organizations, emphasizing that hate has no place in Portland, and we will stand together, we will put our money where our mouths are, and we will do whatever we can to keep everybody safe. And same thing, tremendously satisfied about the New Portland Policy Council, Commission rather, which we established last year with the council's support, and now it has overhead funding for two positions ongoing, and that means that it will be here when it's most needed. And it's already been showing great community benefits in the number of times I've been at community events where somebody says, "I'm on the New Portland Policy Commission," and is clearly taking that responsibility very, very seriously. So thank you, Mayor, for the partnerships with all of our community organizations. And again, I've seen the mayor at so many community events expressing hope and determination in these troubled times, and I appreciate your leadership on that. There's a number of other things I'm very excited about in the budget and very satisfied about. Youth bus passes has been a conversation for as long as I've been on the council, and this year, we finally said, "We're not going to just fund one of the districts in Portland, we're going to allocate the same amount of money to all three that are completely within the city of Portland." And I'm looking forward to working with Commissioner Udaly to have a meeting with school board officials, school district officials, and youth to figure out what's the best way to apportion that money. There's other issues that are very much in line with our equity goals, the four Parks Rangers for East Portland, the first time we've had dedicated ongoing funding for Parks Rangers in East Portland, and that includes the Spring Water Corridor, where Charlie Hales, Mayor Charlie Hales, led the cleanup of that work, again, ably assisted by the Parks Rangers and the Parks staff, and by the Joint Office of Homeless Services. And that was not easy at all. I give him great credit. This is not in the budget, Mayor, but I also want to thank you right now for helping with the relocation of Right to Dream Two. I had a delighted community member coming up to me when I was getting ready for this hearing, talking about the vacant lot that's now next to the Chinagate, which it truly is a win-win-win, that that site will be developed, the property owners are getting compensation, and Right to Dream Two, thanks particularly to Book Nelson and your staff, also to Dora Perry and Christina Nieves and Claire Adamczyk on mine. Doesn't require city money, although we are going to probably be coming back for some allocations for ongoing utilities like water and electricity. But the amount of good that that community does to help everybody who needs a safe place to rest is a huge benefit, and thank you for all your work with the Office of Management and Finance to make that happen. We've got $7.2 million in this budget for capital projects within transportation infrastructure, and that's because of the 50% set aside policy that the council with Commissioner Fish and Commissioner Saltzman passed a few years ago. And I'm very satisfied by that, which means we are taking care of the most urgent safety needs. And I also am very happy about allocating $1.6 million of, well, it's close to that, over one and a half million, ongoing for Vision Zero using cannabis tax money. And that is going to pay dividends in some of our most vulnerable communities and is going to save lives. And I'm so happy that that is done. And again, Mayor, thank you for your willingness and the budget office to do that. This, as was mentioned, the $500,000 for the budgeting process to make sure that those who were impacted by cannabis prohibition share in the opportunities and the money that's coming in because of the legalization of it. And then finally, I'm glad that Mayor Wheeler followed in Mayor Hales's footsteps and allocated the $1 million to special appropriations rather than having everybody knocking on all the council's doors and making the rounds. I want to thank Tim Crell, my chief of staff, Sonya Schmansky, who's next, Tim, and I appreciate how the chiefs of staff have really worked together to make sure that when we're not allowed to talk to each other, there's still communication going on, that we're still listening to citizens and doing the public's work. And so the fact that we've not got people storming the table here, we've done some very difficult things in this budget. We unfortunately had to close the Buckman Pool, and we certainly kept it going as long as we possibly could. We were not able to buy the other green space there. There's other things that we're doing with system development charges. It is, as you noted, Commissioner Saltzman, a lot of money, and we work really hard to spend the taxpayers' money wisely, and so I thank everybody for their participation. Aye.
Wheeler?
Well, I just want to thank my colleagues. It was a great process, and I enjoyed the collaboration we had amongst each other. I appreciated the collaboration amongst our staffs. I was just getting to know the city bureaus, and I have found that, for the most part, we have outstanding people leading our bureaus. We have great frontline employees. The community came together on this budget. They helped us navigate some very challenging situations, and I'm very excited about that. This budget also had an eye to the future. I'm just going to mention two areas that I thought were interesting. I'll add to the list. Number one, I want to thank the budget office and Andrew Scott in particular for working to come up with a really, I think, innovative and important solution to start getting at the backlog of our infrastructure, particularly transportation infrastructure, parks infrastructure, and civic infrastructure. So I'm very excited about what the opportunity for the Build Portland program, which is encapsulated in this budget, is. The other thing, it was sort of a small gesture. I would describe it as the first steps towards reinventing the way we engage our police bureau with the public through the creation of the community service officer program. It's only starting with 12th, but it is a fundamental shift in the way we're trying to allocate resources into the community around policing. They will be non-sworn officers carrying non-lethal weapons, in other words, no firearms. And the goal there is to help assist with community engagement issues. It frees up other officers for other purposes, and it creates a program, which I hope over the years will continue to expand and continue to engage in a very meaningful way with the community. And it's something that, at least so far as I've heard, is very, very well-supported within the community. So we're starting small, and hopefully, with time, we will see that program expand. So I'm very happy. Again, colleagues, thank you for all the good guidance, council suggestions, ideas, revisions, wholesale rewrites that you guys helped with. I thought it was a lot of fun at the end of the day. And didn't I say that, Andrew, right on the first day? I said, "I think budgets are fun," and it lived up to the billing.
I vote aye. The ordinance is adopted, is amended. That was the fun part. Now let's hear the unfun part.
One remaining ordinance to approve taxes for the fiscal year.
Boo hiss. Please read the item.
652, approve levying taxes for the city for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2017, and ending June 30, 2018.
Colleagues, I have one amendment to this-
Colleagues, I have one amendment to this. Commissioner Fritz alluded to this a moment ago. It's a technical amendment to this item. I'd like to put forth a motion to reduce the amount excluded from limitation for bonded indebtedness in paragraph A, section four, from $17,590,351 to $14,670,710 to align with updated estimates of debt issuance and related debt. Second. I have moved. Commissioner Saltzman has seconded this citulating amendment. Andrew?
I'm going to defer to Eric Johansson.
Thank you. Mayor Commissioners, Eric Johansson, City Debt Manager. The reason behind this request is that we have delayed the issuance, the second tranche of the Geo Parks Bonds Authorization. We had originally intended to issue early in next fiscal year and have debt service in next fiscal year. Now that issuance has been delayed, so the debt service on this, on that next tranche won't begin until the subsequent fiscal year. Therefore, we can reduce the tax levy for 17-18 by the amount of debt that we had projected for next year.
Excellent. And I want to give a shout out to your team. This is very complicated stuff, and it's a critical part of the process that often gets overlooked. So thank you, and please pass your thanks, my thanks on to your team as well. Is there any further discussion on this item? Is there any public testimony on this item?
I did not have a sign-up sheet.
Very good. Please call the roll on item 652.
Fish?
Aye.
Saltzman?
Aye.
Fritz?
Well, taxes pay for services, and you've just heard about some of the great services that these taxes are going to pay for. I want to add one thing in addition, that they're going to be paying for the public campaign finance, open and accountable election system. There's $250,000 in this year's budget, but there's going to be ongoing money for that starting in 2020. So when, we certainly all have answers for folks who say, "What have you done for me and my community?" We can point to different things that have happened in pretty much every neighborhood. This is something that will be available to everybody who wants to run in a Portland City Council or disposition election starting in 2020. Again, Mayor, thank you for your leadership on that, too.
Thank you.
Wheeler?
Aye. The ordinance is adopted as amended.
Wasn't that the amendment?
I'm sorry, the-
That was the amendment.
Yeah, the amendment, sorry. Yeah, no, it was a good amendment, thank you. Sorry, I was reading something else. Is there any further discussion on the main motion? Any public testimony on the main motion? Hearing none, please call the roll on the main motion.
Fish? Saltzman?
Aye.
Well, Chris.
Fritz?
Since my comments switched, thank you very much to Eric Johansson. This is related to the Parks Bond, and I very much, again, appreciate all of the work that's going on in that and the community and with the community. So this is, in some sense, a participatory budget process that there's a lot of public input. It makes a difference. Aye.
Wheeler?
I would like to thank legal counsel, and I would like to thank the clerk. Often forgotten in this process, obvious, often in the firing line, you guys do great work, and it's deeply appreciated. Aye. The ordinance is adopted as amended. Before we adjourn, just a reminder, item 653 has been rescheduled to June 15 at 2:00 p.m., and item-
654?
654, there it is, I got it, has been moved to Wednesday, rescheduled to Wednesday, June 21 at 2:00 p.m. And with that, we are adjourned.